Good evening, everybody. We'll call to order our Pecosin City School Board meeting for October 15th. AJ, would you like to help us pledge in our moment of silence? Thank you.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for a moment of silence. Please be seated. Today's inspirational quote is by a Virginia native who you'll find appropriate for the October month. It's Edgar Allan Poe. "The ninety and nine are with dreams content, but the hope of the world made new is the hundredth man who is grimly bent on making those dreams come true." Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go further, I'd just like to say thank you for your flexibility. We've got early voting over here to contend with, so we're kind of set up oddly, but thank you for your flexibility on that. Ms. Carroll, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Chair Martin, no additions or modifications.
Thank you. Ms. Purdy, recognition?
Chair, board members, members of the community and colleagues, thank you for joining us this evening. We just have one acknowledgement for the evening. But before I share about our senior of the month, I did want to take this opportunity to talk about the Senior of the Month program, which is actually organized by the Pecosin Exchange Club. They not only recognize our seniors of the month with a plaque and gift certificate to a local business, but they also provide local and national scholarship opportunities. So we wanted to give an opportunity to thank them for their partnership and support of our school division. This outstanding student is a shining example of school spirit and hard work. During her time at Pecosin High School, she's done well academically by taking many advanced-level classes, including honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment. And this academic success is a testament to her dedication to school and love of learning. The October Senior of the Month is an active participant in many Pecosin High School extracurricular activities. They use leadership skills as a member of the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy and as president of the Pecosin High School Family Career and Community Leaders of America, which is the FCCLA club. And this student is also in a variety of clubs and honor societies at PHS. They are members of the Leo Club, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Side by Side, French Club, Model UN, Leo Club, Key Club, Excel Club, Roca Honor Society, and French Honor Society, which might be all of them. I'm not sure. The October Student of the Month is also a member of the varsity tennis team at PHS and serves on the Pecosin Library Teen Advisory Board as historian. They've even served as a bank teller at her in-house Bayport Credit Union. So it is no surprise that this young lady would also give her time to volunteer at Riverside Hospital and find time to hold a part-time job at a local gift store. Please help me in congratulating Shelby Moore as the PHS October Senior of the Month. Shelby, if you want to step forward?
That concludes our acknowledgements for the evening. Thank you, Ms. Purdy. We'll move to presentations and reports with instruction update. Ms. I?
Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Burbage, and distinguished board members. Tonight, I will be providing updates regarding PCPS happenings, advanced coursework update, and a spotlight on the I-POP program. First, we have some students from Pecosin Primary School who are participating in hands-on math to bring home the math skills that they have been learning. And pictured here are some first and second graders. And everyone's favorite school memory, the book fair, is at the primary school, and they're making their wish lists here. And we have another primary school update with Wednesday's Word with Mrs. Green, one of our reading specialists, where students hear a new vocabulary word from the new books purchased with PEF grant funds every Wednesday. Ms. Green reads the word in a portion of text, and students must put their thinking caps on and use context clues to figure out the meaning of the word. And then winners are selected from those who correctly answered. And we find that students often search for and check out books from the library to read again that Ms. Green is reading. At the elementary school, our fourth graders got to go to the outdoor classroom and an opportunity to learn about the monarch butterfly and their migration journey with master gardeners. At the middle school, we have eighth-grade students using the engineering design process to design and build solar cars using recycled materials. And performing arts sixth graders are completing their project of creating rhythmic compositions using music software, collaborating in small groups to lay out their song formats, pick lighting cues, and perform their rhythms together on a stage. And of course, homecoming. Last week at PHS, it was a great homecoming week filled with spirit days, hallway decorations, the pep rally, the parade, the football game. I have to say that was a highlight of my week, my first homecoming in Pecosin, and I remarked how it felt so nostalgic and something you would see in a movie sometimes. So it was really fun to see and participate in. I did help the 11th graders win during the pep rally with some of mine. So hair clip, things like that, you know. All right. Participants in the community quilt project have begun submitting their beautiful handmade contributions in this international project. And last Sunday, the Evolution Show Choir had a meet-and-greet as well as a question-and-answer session with the cast of the latest Busch Gardens Halascream Show, Monster Stomp. And we want to thank all the chaperones who helped with that. Last meeting, I promised you an update on advanced coursework, and here it is, in our commitment to expanding opportunities for students to engage in advanced coursework through a variety of pathways. From the 2022 to '23 school year to '23-'24, we saw an increase in student participation in dual enrollment, advanced placement, AP courses overall. While the numbers show an overall increase, it's also noteworthy that the numbers are higher despite a decrease in enrollment of about 34 students, so those numbers still increased. You can see it's a significant change from the previous year. The total enrollments for AP dual enrollment honors the last three years, the '23 school year, 861, '24, 881, and currently, right now, 1,013. And finally, the spotlight on our I-POP program. So in PCPS, our pre-K program consists of two pre-K teachers, four paraeducators. In total, we have 36 pre-K students enrolled, 16 in the morning and 20 in the evening, or the afternoon session. And we maintain a ratio of about one adult to every six students. Our enrollment is divided into three categories. The Virginia Preschool Initiative, or VPI, students, students with disabilities, and tuition-based students. So I'm going to start explaining what VPI is. The Virginia Preschool Initiative, the goal is to reduce disparities among young children and reduce or eliminate those risk factors that lead to early academic failure. Currently, our VPI slots are for four-year-olds with the funding source of both state and local funds. Each division is allotted a set number of slots based on state guidelines, local needs assessments, local capacity, and other factors such as other programs in the area, like Head Start programs. Students who are considered at risk include those who come from families with an income at or below the 200% federal poverty guidelines, those who are experiencing homelessness, students whose parents or guardians are school dropouts, or children with disabilities. In addition, localities may establish criteria that incorporate risk factors specific to their community. Examples may include abuse and trauma, students in foster care, students who are English language learners, and children who have parents that are on deployment. Students with disability meet the standard state eligibility for VPI. However, we may also fund additional slots using special education funds once we have filled those allotted VPI slots. For example, in the past school year, we were allotted seven VPI slots, and we enrolled 12 additional students with disabilities using special education funding. PCPS conducts an annual child find event aimed at identifying and screening children with suspected disabilities to ensure that we support them as early as possible. And lastly, we offer a limited number of slots to community members through a tuition-based system, which is based on availability and is also a lottery. So that is where the students come from, but we lovingly call this program the I-POP program. And here is why. So as you just learned, they're funded through either VPI, special education, or tuition. Regardless of the funding source, all students are educated in our two inclusive preschool classrooms. At PCPS, we use an inclusive preschool approach called I-POP. The Training and Technical Assistance Centers, or TTAC, defines I-POP as an inclusive placement opportunity for preschoolers, but in Pecosin, we refer to it as Integrated Pecosin Outreach Preschool. Regardless of the name, the mission remains the same, to provide an inclusive learning environment for all preschoolers. The I-POP program is a proactive, early childhood approach or model to help ensure students with diverse needs, including those with disabilities, have access to inclusive learning environments from the beginning of their educational journey. The program is designed to support the development of all preschoolers, integrating children with varying abilities into the general education classroom, where they benefit from peer interactions and tailored instruction. Here are some key components. The I-POP program places preschoolers with identified developmental delays or disabilities alongside their typically developing peers in the same classroom setting. This approach fosters an inclusive culture where students learn from each other, building empathy, social skills, a sense of community, and they're looking at a one-to-one ratio there, meaning a student with a disability to a typically developing peer. In I-POP classrooms, teachers implement differentiated instruction to meet the needs of all learners. Students with special needs receive individualized support, including accommodations or modifications, while still participating in the general curriculum. Special education staff, such as speech therapists and occupational therapists, collaborate with the general education teachers to provide additional support as needed. The I-POP program emphasizes the importance of early intervention, identifying and addressing developmental challenges at a young age. By providing services early, the program helps to close learning gaps, enhance social-emotional learning, and prepare students for success in later grades. Progress is regularly monitored and to ensure that each child is receiving the appropriate intervention and support. The program values strong partnerships with family, keeping them informed and engaged of their child's progress. Regular communication and collaboration between educators and families to ensure the needs of each child are met at the classroom and at home. I-POP reflects the district's commitment to ensuring that all students are given the opportunity to learn alongside their peers. This model prepares students for future educational experiences in a diverse world. So some of the benefits we see is that inclusion promotes higher achievement, better social interactions, and improved self-esteem. For typically developing peers, inclusion fosters an understanding and appreciation and teaches the important social-emotional skills. And for teachers in the district, the program builds capacity for inclusive practices, enhancing the overall quality of early childhood education. We do have some areas where we could grow our I-POP program, including extending it to more three-year-olds, and full-day programs, because right now, it's AM or PM. And that would be things that we would discuss as a team to see if we could expand our program in such a way. And that is it for my presentation tonight. Here is the calendar that we have been ending with, so you know what's upcoming. And do you have any questions for me tonight? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next is our operations update with Mr. Robert.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent Mr. Till, staff, and community members. This update today will be filled with a lot of committee talk and also some research that we've been doing for items we discussed at our previous board meeting and just things we've been researching in general. So first up, we have the safety update. We are forming that committee. We discussed last board meeting. We were supposed to meet October 18th, but because of schedules, we're going to have to reschedule because of conflicts. Hoping to get that in the month of October, if not, definitely before the next board meeting. Hoping to get that in the month of October, if not definitely before the next board meeting, so we have some of these things already addressed. Everything you see under the first bullet there is things that we'll be talking about. So I went ahead and done some preliminary research, just basically on pricing, because that was the questions we kind of generated last board meeting. The Open Gate system that we currently have in the high school, that we have one unit for, each of those units right now are costing almost $18,000 a piece. Now, we were able to fund that through grant money last time, so hopefully we can get lucky and, you know, score another grant to help offset some of those costs, but that is the current going rate. Synagix is the company, if you followed the unfortunate tragedy in Georgia, the alert system that they use, the company, the vendor, with their badge system, and it had a push-button alert system in their I D badges. So basically, this company will come in and take over your whole security system as far as your visitor management system, alert systems, and also install alarms and strobes throughout every classroom and room in the building hallways. That way, if you depress the button on the badge, it actually alerts everyone with alarms and lights. So it's just an automatic thing, so you don't have to worry about the, you know, intercom system and someone having access to those things. You can see the prices there. It's quite pricey, but that is included in, or does include all the hardware they come and install for you, and they maintain that system 100%. The only thing that they ask from our I T people are two ethernet cables, and that's pretty much it. So that's the price ranges for those. Our current visitor management system has been kind of buggy. Our I T department's working through that. There's its cost. It's only $2,500 a year. You can kind of see the significant difference in the two vendors there. But our I T department just recently found out that they could do this, you know, the Raptor in our schools off of an iPad. So instead of having all this extra hardware that is, it may be causing the issues, this may make it more user-friendly and actually work out some of the bugs that we've been experiencing. So we're going to request some information on that and try to experiment with it a little bit. And then, of course, the allergy program that we keep talking about, our health and safety committee met with Ms. Worthing the other day, and we discussed that with Ms. Wolf, our airmark representative for food services, to start that program and training. So all those things will be mentioned and more probably at that safety committee to start vetting some of these things to see what direction we need to go. All right, transportation. So we're getting ready to look at purchasing our bus this year, one or two. I've done a lot of researches in the alternative power or fuel sources, really concentrating on that electric bus, you know, pathway, and it's quite expensive, as you can see. One bus, you know, costing $375,000. The charging stations, that's not even including the install costs, are $15,000, $20,000 just to get the actual charging station. So, you know, we are looking at still sticking with the diesel buses for right now, just because of the cost-effectiveness and the high capacity that we can get out of that price point. We are looking into the bus stop arm cameras, because that is something that's a growing trend that, for awareness there. You know, those cameras run anywhere from $300 to $400 plus install. The bus tracker software is something I'm really interested in. You know, I know that our transportation has been running a little bit behind here lately, and unfortunately, we're running with less drivers right now due to a virus of some sort that's kind of hit our fleet, and it's a pretty nasty one. So I hope those drivers get better soon so we can, you know, get them back on the road and help our speed a little bit. But that bus tracking software, neighboring or surrounding divisions use these type of app software, just kind of tells you where the bus is to give you a, you know, a kind of a guess limit rather than us to have to keep on continually sending out those Parent Square messages. So something that we will be looking into to see if it's cost-effective and something that will work on our equipment. Bus Safety Week is coming up in October. It's a good opportunity to kind of spread the safety awareness to the community, to the students, to know things like, okay, what rules are there when the bus stop arm goes out, or, you know, what, how close should you follow a bus? You know, these things are very important to keep our students safe while traveling. So, you know, I'll be pushing some things out to principals to help spread the word and kind of celebrate the bus drivers, to give them a kind of a pick-me-up as well. We can kind of have that as a dual purpose. And of course, I'll give my shameless plug. If you know anyone or yourself interested in being an aide, a sub-driver, or a full-time driver, please do contact me any way you want, email, phone, whatever. We will definitely get that process started for you. All right, the cell phone committee, we met October 7th, and there was parent staff, admin from every building represented. We had 20 people in attendance, and that meeting really was just to set the stage for our next meeting, which we'll be trying to create that draft to bring to you in November for your first reading. We went over the executive order. We definitely dived into that guidance document from V D O E, which is kind of the guiding light, and there's some good discussions. You know, I really enjoyed it. I think everyone that came really did give their input, and it was very productive. I'm really looking forward to the next meeting that will be there at the end of this month or the beginning of next. And like I said, the draft policy hopefully will be in your hands by November. That way, we can kind of get November, December in for the readings and be ready to implement that January 1. So I met with all the regional people that do the calendar for their divisions last week. It was Yorkhampton, Newport News, Williamsburg, Gloucester. Overall, for this upcoming school year, what we're probably going to put together mimics a lot like what we have this year, and we're staying pretty much in line across those divisions. However, it was mentioned, in the next year, 26, 27 school year, a lot of those divisions are looking to start earlier. I'm not saying that's the path that we have to choose, but I just think that's important to know, you know, I'm giving you that information. So that's just something we discussed. Our calendar committee will begin meeting back in December, or up in December, and hopefully have everything ready traditionally like we always do in March for your approval for the next school year's calendar. And that's it, unless you have questions.
Is there a guidance? I think I remember that there's.
It's going to be a gradual thing. You know, they're really talking about moving it back another week and then, you know, next year considering, you know, even further. And there, most divisions are now looking at maybe trying to get a two-year-out cycle as far as how they're doing their calendars, and I think that's just to kind of give people the heads up if they're starting to move that needle back, so. But that's just some discussion right now. It's not.
If I could add just one piece to that, there is, the current calendar law, unless changed, only let's, school divisions that are talking about this, there's not a whole lot of room to meet the calendar, start much earlier, just to throw that out there. Unless the law changes, that's, not a lot of wiggle room to start significantly earlier. There are waivers that are available for some school divisions that have a track record, I think, two of the last three years, that have X number of days of inclement weather that they can apply for a waiver to start earlier. There are some mountain schools in Virginia that start significantly earlier, but we wouldn't qualify for any of those waivers.
And so the idea there would be if you start early, you're out earlier? I mean, is that what the local, it's still the 180 days?
180 days. The challenge is, when you stay within those guardrails of starting no sooner than they allow you to start and finishing by the time they require you to finish, there's not a lot of room within that for flexibility. So some of the school divisions that have started the week earlier have not done what we did to get out the week earlier in June. They've actually sprinkled days throughout the year, which is another option. That would be, you know, a conversation certainly the calendar committee entertains every year. That's really the only option or autonomy you have within the calendar law of where you place those days that you have wiggle room, so does in the guardrails of the start and end date requirement. That make sense?
Yes.
I had a follow-up question. You mentioned the metal detectors. You had given us a price per unit. Have you done any analysis to see how many units we would per school?
Actually, I had that conversation with that vendor, same vendor today with Open Gate, and I said, you know, we have this many students, and this is kind of how we would use it, being, you know, all that, the bus dump of all the students coming in. They said that, you know, if you set it up correctly, because there's different levels of settings, and you kind of teach the students what to remove from their persons that will automatically go off that are not harmful, that two units up front and one in the back, they said, would suffice for our high school if you would want to do it every day for the, you know, them coming into the building, so.
And the thought would be that's just for entering school on school days, not for extracurricular activities?
They are mobile units. They run on like cordless drill batteries is what they look like. So yeah, we could take these to any school, to any event, to, you know, after school, anything. So, yeah, they're pretty portable.
And the other interesting piece about this particular product, I've been looking at weapon detection systems that used to be called metal detectors for years, and the technology has evolved such that they are actually very capable of detecting harmful items versus non-harmful items. So they don't slow down the process of entering school with everything that might have metal in it ringing the alarm. They're actually, they look at cylinders and different kinds of things in certain metals that would indicate a harmful, like a gun or a knife. And I've kind of watched this over the years, and these particular, they don't call them metal detectors anymore. They call them weapon detection systems. They're really designed to hone in on something that would harm somebody versus everyday items that kids might have keys and such in their pockets. So we're watching what's happening around us with other school divisions, and so we'll be having this conversation forward as we start the budget cycle process to see if that's something you all would like to entertain. But the beautiful part about these devices is they are mobile and they are smart.
Sorry, one more follow-up. Do you anticipate any additional costs to changing the infrastructure to accommodate these, or will they, you know, plug in as is?
It's plug and play. That was the beauty of last year when we got those. We kind of debated whether we were going to do a trial run or not. I'm glad that we did because we got to see how easy, and it's just like you said, it's a plug and play. There's nothing additional. You can definitely buy more bells and whistles for it, but as far as the standard setup, it worked pretty well, so. Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Robert.
Thank you.
Ms. Carroll, is there any, anybody signed up for public comment?
Um, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Show us the one.
Sorry, Ms. Spence.
It's okay.
We should always talk about money.
Yeah, I know. You can never miss that one.
Especially where we are right now.
Exactly, exactly. No worries. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and the school community and peers. For the finance report this evening, I want to review our The Impact Aid program with you since October is the month in which we collect the data. Impact Aid is one of the federal funding sources which are included in our budget. In addition, at the end of the presentation, I'll be reviewing with you the F Y 26 key The Impact Aid is a U.S. Department of Education program's federal funding that provides financial assistance to local school divisions. We receive basic support payments for federally connected children, which are those students whose parents or legal guardians are either, one, active-duty military, or two, work on federal property. Impact Aid funding is distributed based on the percentage of a school division's federally connected population. Based on last year's survey, the school, the P C P S, had 554 federally connected students, which was about 28% of our total enrollment. The active-duty military accounts for about 55% of those students. So we are required to compile information and report annually by January to support funding for the following fiscal year. Therefore, in order to determine eligibility for students enrolled in our schools, an annual Impact Aid survey form must be completed. This year, the survey form will be completed using Parent Square as it was last year. The survey will be based on employment as of October 16th, 2024, tomorrow. Families will receive notification when the survey opens for them via email, text, or phone, depending on their notification preference. Impact Aid does require that a separate form be completed for each child, each student, which is easy to click between students and the Parent Square. And this form should be completed as soon as possible, but no later than Halloween, October 31st. So that's a good way to remember it. Now, as you can see from this slide, the schools receive significant funding through the Impact Aid program. The total for the last five years is a little over $1.1 million, and we really appreciate everyone taking the time to complete these forms to assist our efforts. Now, on to the fiscal year 26 budget. The key dates for the proposed budget for fiscal year 26 will be shown on the next two slides, and we'll review them now. November 7th, the budget submissions are due from the principals and directors. December 20th is when we anticipate release of Governor Youngkin's budget proposal for the following fiscal year for the schools. January 8th is when the General Assembly Session convenes, and January 21st is when the superintendent will present a budget update at the school board work session. February 18th is the work session where the proposed budget will be presented. March 18th is the public hearing on the superintendent's proposed budget. And April 28th is the proposed date for the joint session, budget discussion between the school board and the city council. Now, there are various avenues for input into the school's fiscal year 26 budget. The superintendent seeks input from faculty and staff. In March, there is a public hearing. Members of the community can come and speak, and in addition, members of the school community can utilize Let's Talk, or call, or email the superintendent directly. And that concludes my report for this evening, if anyone has any questions. Yeah.
Did you mention that Impact Aid form is solely on the Parent Square app?
Yes, that's where you're going to be doing it, through the Parent Square. But if you need the form, you can ask the office staff of your school.
Thank you, Ms. Spence. Okay, now, Ms. Carroll, is there anybody signed up for public comment?
Chair Martin, no one has signed up for any comments today.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll move to the consent agenda. Dr. Burbage?
Okay, this evening for the consent agenda, we have approval of financial reports. We have authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached request. We have approval of personnel action. We have approval of minutes for September's regular meeting. And lastly, we have approval to authorize the superintendent to sign a contract for custodial services with Service Master Commercial Services for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Is there a motion?
Prior to moving to the consent agenda, I'd like to move to have personnel action pulled from the consent agenda and voted on separately, please.
Okay. We will remove item C and move to other matters for consideration for single lit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the consent agenda will consist of A, B, D, and E. There a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments, questions? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the votes?
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett is absent. Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes six, zero.
Thank you. We'll move to other matters for consideration. The first is a consideration for approval of the proclamation for bus safety, as Mr. Roberts informed us of. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes six, zero.
Thank you. And we'll add the approval of personnel action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Dr. Bartlett, I'm sorry, Mr. DeBose?
Abstain. My abstention is related to a family member being on part of the personnel action.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes five, zero.
Thank you. All right, communications and other matters by school board and/or superintendent. Mr. Lamaghi? Mr. Lamagie?
Here are the reports from this month from different schools, starting with Picocan Primary School. At PPS, we have been very busy with our fall assessments. We have completed the VALLS for first and second grade and are now assessing our PK and kindergarten students. We have also completed fall math and social emotional screeners for our kindergarten students with the BKRP. And we'll be doing our DESSA, DESSA for first and second graders. Again, all this data is utilized to drive our instruction and in the development of any needed interventions. Last week, we had our book fair, which was extremely successful. We are so excited to know that our students have some wonderful new books in their home libraries. We also have literacy and cultural activities for families to visit that same evening. They were able to hear some read aloud stories with our staff and could make a bookmark or a blending board to help with reading at home. Senior Ramirez did an activity with families in celebration of the upcoming Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead. Additionally, several families attended a meeting with Mrs. Kason and Mrs. Green to learn more about the Virginia Literacy Act and how to help students become better readers. In the classrooms, we have been doing several hands-on activities from making shapes with Play-Doh and spaghetti, yes, spaghetti, to sorting and experimenting with apples to practicing map skills. And now we are getting ready for pumpkins, exploring, comparing, sorting, and then carving. We also have celebrated a week of kindness and no bullying. Yesterday, we, we put a lid on bullying and today we socked it to bullying and wore crazy socks. Coming up, our preschoolers will have a visit from the SPCA. Our first graders will enjoy a visit from Jamestown Outreach and all students will get a visit from the Mobile Dairy Farm, thanks to our PTO for sponsoring this. Second graders will also head to the Virginia Living Museum soon. We want to thank the Picocan Education Foundation for funding several fall grants. These monies will be used to support learning in our classrooms. Congratulations to Mrs. Green, Ms. Kraft, Mrs. Ferris, Mrs. Deraba, Mrs. Barton, and Mrs. Luongo on their grant awards. From the elementary school. Picocan Elementary School is settling into the school year and enjoying the cooler fall temperatures. Retired teacher, Ms. Susan Northcutt, is hosting classes in the PES outdoor classroom and garden where students are learning about monarch butterflies and their migratory patterns. Our PE teacher, Ms. Barnes, has also been adding extra fun to recess by facilitating daily small group games, outdoor challenges, and a weekly kickball game to promote positive interactions during recess. Picocan High School graduate, Jamie Stegerwald, facilitated guest readers from CNU Greek Community to read in all of our classrooms. The books read to students aligned with the themed essential questions in students' reading units. PES and CNU students alike enjoyed the opportunity to learn from each other. PES students are participating in Bullying Prevention Spirit Week and will highlight the week tomorrow by wearing orange for Unity Day. We are grateful for the support from the Picocan Education Foundation as the PEF presented fall grants, awards to Mrs. Carrie Griffin, Ms. Julie Ferris, Mrs. Sonia Alcock, and Ms. Jen Barnes. We are thankful for the instructional materials these grants provide to the awarded classrooms. Our teachers will be setting up meeting dates for parent-teacher conferences very soon, and we encourage all of our parents to attend and learn more about their child's performance in school. Thank you for supporting Picocan Elementary School. From Picocan Middle School. Picocan Middle School is all-in. Our school counselors have been busy setting up our students for success through classroom lessons. All sixth-grade students participated in classroom counseling lessons entitled "Make Most of Middle School." Students viewed a tips and tricks video made by seventh and eighth-grade PMS students who shared personal recommendations for managing lockers, homework, staying organized, peer relationships, and extracurricular involvement. PMS Adaptive Special Education Class will be taking their first community-based instructional field trip this week. Students will practice social interactions, communication, and money skills while visiting a local restaurant for lunch and a farm to purchase pumpkins. The pumpkins will later be used for an exploratory science lesson. Picocan Middle School's Fall Dance will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Friday, October 25th. We will celebrate Red Ribbon October 28th to November 1st by participating in school spirit days that is, that are designed to promote a drug-free lifestyle. This year's national theme is Life is a Movie, Film Drug Free. PMS would like to congratulate our October Golden Bowl Students of the Month. Emery Hayner, 6th grade, Sonia West, 7th grade, and Harper Edwards, 8th grade. And finally, from the high school. Picocan High School has had, has had an incredible month, starting off with homecoming. Students participated in a variety of fun activities from senior tie-dying during one lunch, a spirit week with record-breaking participation, hall decorating, congratulations freshmen on a great hall, a wonderful pep rally, congratulations juniors on winning the spirit stick, a fun parade, a victorious homecoming game, and a dance Saturday night that was a blast for all. Thank you to all who helped for such a successful event. PHS academics are moving along with the ASFAB given last week, the PSATs given next week to all sophomores, and a variety of engaging activities and classes as we wrap up first quarter. Congratulations to our band as they had a successful start to their competition season with Marfalo. Be sure to check out our band as they open the seafood festival this weekend. Athletics has been very busy and successful. Golf competed yesterday at the state tournament and performed strong on a tough course. We are proud of a great season. Volleyball, cross-country, field hockey, and football all expect a busy post-season coming soon. We'd also like to thank the PEF for the two grants awarded to our teachers at PHS, especially for the support of our new STEM club that meets during one lunch. Always check the Island Times on Parent Square for important updates from PHS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamagie. Mr. Maxwell?
All right. First, I want to again congratulate the Senior of the Month. What an impressive resume. Very impressive. I want to say thank you to everyone who helped make the book fair possible. I know it was a hit with my kids. We got to participate in that. Also, a special thank you to all the volunteers and organizations that participate in Homecoming Week. I got to attend the parade. It was a great parade. Lots of people. I love that community that we have around our schools here. Initially, I guess I'm still awaiting the safety. But I hope to give updates on that as, as we have our first meeting.
Thank you. Dr. Goodell?
I just want to echo congratulations to Shelby. Also, just I've been fortunate this week to be kind of on a, a tour from Raleigh to Cincinnati to Moritz City on different conference. Something that kind of came across was, you know, we're, we're looking at this phone policy. And I got to talk to some students in some other schools that have been doing this. A lot of the students, I think we always, we always think we can go top-down. You know, the governor says, hey, we should abolish all phones. But a lot of students, they're not so opposed to that. I mean, I'm talking to them. They really want the schools to kind of meet them halfway and walk the walk. So I hope there's opportunities to say, you know, we look at it now, so much social media presence on the schools' apps. You know, my kid wants to check his grades on Power School all the time. I mean, so there's a lot of stuff where we're not really unplugging as much as we want our students to upplug. So, you know, it'll be interesting to craft that policy. You know, and I've also seen it on the flip side where, you know, I've been part of some good, you know, a good workshop where I was in a room with 50 undergraduates for a day and a half. Nobody had their phone out because we were, you know, it was kind of a blue economy, a pitch types of things. They were, they were into it. They were talking. They were writing down ideas. They were sharing. They weren't worried about it. So there's, there's just lots of opportunities. I think that, you know, as a board, as the committee is, think about it. I know, you know, the first thing going is rotting our brains. Our, our parents too, I think, you know, I think sometimes it's good to have just unplugged disconnect days. You could almost probably, yourself feel the anxiety. You know, we work, you know, worried if there's a disaster at work or something like that, or if I'm missing help, students feel the same way. I mean, it's not, it's not your life. Well, we make a lot of money, but it's important to them. So it's, it's not an easy task and, you know, I just, I look forward to trying to do the best.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Agree to echo the sentiments. Thank you to the Exchange Club for sponsoring the Student of the Month program and a big congratulations to our first honoree, Shelby. Also, thank you to the PHS administration, the staff, all involved. I mean, I have fond memories of Homecoming Week from many, many, many years ago, but it's just such a unique experience in a small town. And it was just really lovely to see from the outside. I don't have any students at PHS, but as mine are creeping closer to that age, do have some personal connections now and heard just a lot of really positive feedback. So just a really good, feel-good week and thank you for bringing that fun to the schools. I think that small-town pride does go a long way, but I'll end with that.
Thank you. Mr. DeBose?
Want to echo everybody else's comments. Couple things about PEF. You heard a number of comments about the grants that were, were issued. You know, PEF does a, does a great job of giving back to our, to our schools. And they have the Run for the Bulls coming up on the 26th. That is probably their number-one way that they turn around and get funds to be able to give back to the schools. So, you know, don't get intimidated by Run for the Bulls. You can actually walk it. You can just give money. There's a one-mile portion of it. So, you know, please come out and participate. It, it really does, does help. And if you don't want to participate, you can sponsor. You know, I know, I know the PEF would gladly take, you know, a couple hundred dollars if, if you're willing. So just remember that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Burbage?
I'd like to reiterate just congratulations to Ms. Shelby Moore as Senior of the Month. I'd also like to add that I have been slowly working through the, I've gone to elementary or primary school and taught, looked in and talked to teachers about CAC-related items. I met with Dr. Winchester last week and talked more about, you know, special ed needs and things like that. I'm slowly gonna, I'm gonna swing by the middle school and scheduled to meet with Ms. Grisco here shortly this month. Did want to add that I actually went by the primary school and taught kids about phytoplankton and zooplankton and protozoan grazing and showed them pictures of, you know, dinoflagellates. And they learned a lot of long vocabulary words. So if any parents are wondering what we're doing in the first grade, it's my fault. So, anyway, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Burbage. I know that they appreciate all of your assistance and we should all learn more about phytoplankton. I remember something about it. I echo the sentiments of the, the board here. Shelby Moore, very impressive resume. I, I need to hook her up with my daughter, get her all in line for that. But that's, that's an amazing resume. I can only imagine her calendar. I also would like to say thank you to the PHS administration, the school board office for the support for the, for homecoming. I have a whole host of high schoolers and so this is the first dance ever that my kids came home and were like, it was so great. We had so much fun. I was like, what? So, thank you. Whatever you did, it's working. Keep doing it. It was great. I, I, it, it was refreshing to hear. I was so happy for that experience for them. Those are the memories that we have that I hope to, to carry on for them as well. So thank you for that. To the middle school, thank you for your relentless communication. The buses and we, I always know what's happening at the middle school. I always know what's happening at the middle school and that's hard to do. That consistency of communication is difficult and we appreciate that. The parents, I know the parents appreciate that. And I would like to give a shout out to the I-Pop team. I can only imagine how difficult it is to corral three and four-year-olds for half a day, much less a full day. And I want to thank them for what they do to get these kids ready to come to school and be successful. You know, that's what it takes to get to the next level is starting at two, three, and four years old. So thank you to the I-Pop team. We wouldn't be where we are if they weren't as successful as they are. So thank you for that. Mr. Tutt?
Again, being last, ditto everything that's been said. I do want to take this opportunity again to thank our staff. In two weeks, we will have finished the first quarter of school already this year. Wow, it has flown by. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank this 305 very dedicated and committed staff members who make this happen every day. So thank you for all your hard work. We very much appreciate you.
Very much so. Thank you. Is there any other material for board review, Ms. Carroll?
There is no other material today.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for a special call for a closed session. Can I get a second?
So moved.
I think, when do I read this now? Okay, all right. Pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, I move that this board go into closed meeting to consider the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school or for discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Carroll, will you please call for the vote?
Vice Chair Burbage?
Aye.
Mr. DeBose?
Aye.
Dr. Goodell?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Vote passes six, zero.
Thank you.